Yeah. Yeah. Good to know, Mitchum. Yeah, I heard it was Sydney Kidder's. Um, this is who. Right.
Call this uh special meeting of the mayor and common council a order. Um. It's spent with the usual things, Scott Lundy's. Uh Mr. Bayhoff, give a motion for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that common council adjourned into a closed meeting on Monday, July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five in accordance with the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland, section three dash three zero five B ten to discuss public security. If the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or to public security, including one, the deployment of fire and police services and staff, and two, the development and implementation of emergency plans. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Joff. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, all in favor of going into a closed session, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say aye. The ayes seem to have it in the ayes seven. And we will now go to a closed meeting. I will note that um at the conclusion of the closed session, we will um adjourn until the return to the regular meeting at seven P M. Mayor Beck, you want to start things off?
I'm going to call the meeting to order or we'll go back into session. I assume we were closed and now we're coming out of the closed. So, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Mayor Council of Westminster. We are gathered here at the Stewart Westminster City Hall. Originally an estate built in eighteen forty-two by Colonel John K. Longwell. The city acquired this building in nineteen thirty-nine and it has since been the venue where the mayor and council conduct city business. One interesting fact about Westminster is writer Ernest Thompson spent much of his formative years here, graduating from Westminster High School in nineteen sixty-seven. Ernest is the writer of On Golden Pond and credits one of his English features at Westminster High School, Mike Eaton, with helping him become a successful author. I thought that was kind of an interesting tidbit. Moving on, the council typically convenes on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and are also streamed live on the city's YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We extend our gratitude to the media center for their partnership in ensuring public access to these meetings. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment, as I'm going to do, and silence your cell phone or any other device that may interrupt the meeting. Now, I need to do that? Okay, now we'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge to the flag followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. As some of you may notice, this evening we are in a slightly relaxed apparel since the Well, again, Greg's not wearing a tie. That's relaxed for that. That's as relaxed as he's gonna get. Kevin Oakes does a tie too. Ramsey, no tie. I noticed that. I like it.
I would say that after a while.
I think, I think the rule we're gonna use is when the temperature is over ninety and the humidity is over whatever it is, we go with the relaxed. At least I think that's what my predecessor, that was basically the rule, right? Something in that range. Tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available on the city's website. Art copies of the agenda are available here at the front of the room for those in attendance. We had no closed sessions. We have no presentations. However, we do have some public hearings. So, Madam Mayor, public hearings are run by the mayor in the city of Westminster, so the gavel is yours.
Thank you very much. I'll call this public hearing to order. So, this public hearing is Public Hearing Annexation eighty-seven, ten twelve, BWMD LLC Petition for Annexation. Annexation Resolution number twenty-five dash zero six and Annexation Plan Resolution number twenty-five dash zero seven. Petition for Annexation to enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus one point two acres continuous and adjoining to the city's existing corporate boundaries. Consisting of real property located at ten twelve Baltimore Boulevard, Westminster, Maryland two one one five seven. Also identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero two nine seven four eight, MAP zero zero four six, grid zero zero one six, parcel zero six one six. Mr. Depot, would you like to give a report?
Thank you. Ten twelve BWMD LLC, the petitioner seeks to annex the property containing approximately one point two acres as described by the mayor. On May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Annexation Resolution twenty-five oh six for Annexation eighty-seven was introduced by the Mayor Common Council. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Annexation Resolution twenty-five oh six, along with the Annexation Plan pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland, provided, was provided to Carroll County and forwarded to the Maryland Department of Planning. On June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Maryland Department of Planning forwarded its review for review comments to the city. That's with attachment four. On July ninth, twenty twenty-five, the Carroll County Planning Zoning Commission met to discuss Annexation eighty-seven and provided the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. On July tenth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of County Commissioners of Carroll County discussed Annexation eighty-seven and voted to provide a comment letter documenting their review process and comments received during the Carroll County sixty-day review period, and that's with attachment five. Neither attachment's provided really any substantive comments related to the annexation. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, the City Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on Annexation eighty-seven. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded the annexation, including Annexation Resolution twenty-five oh six and the Annexation Plan to the Mayor Common Council with a favorable recommendation. At this time, the Department of Community Planning and Development recommend that the Mayor Common Council adopt Annexation twenty-five oh six, approving Annexation eighty-seven, ten twelve BWMD LLC, as provided in attachment one of this report. And I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Is there anyone here who would like to have a comment? Hearing done. We'll call this hearing pause. Next hearing I'd like to call to order is ordinance number Ordinance number two zero two five dash oh one zero one Automobile Uses Tax Amendment and ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, amending chapter sixty-four zoning and subdivisions of land of the code of the city of Westminster. One sixty-four dash three Definitions and word usage to add the definitions of automobile detailing shop, automobile repair and service shop major, automobile repair and service shop minor and automobile sales, and to replace the term service station with automobile service station to amend section one sixty-four dash one two one on premises, business signs and article twenty special provisions, section one sixty-four dash one four nine. Automobile service stations as well as the permitted uses and or special exception uses in the mixed-use infill zone, section one sixty-four dash thirty-nine point two. B Business Zone, section one sixty-four dash forty-one and section one sixty-four dash forty-two. DB Downtown Business Zone, section one sixty-four dash five point eight and section one sixty-four four uh dash four five point nine. IR Restricted Industrial Zone, section one sixty-four dash fifty-four. IG General Industrial Zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-one and section and section one sixty-four dash sixty-two. NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-four point two. PI Plan Industrial Zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-six and section one sixty-four dash seventy-five. And PRSC Plan Regional Shopping Center Zone, section one sixty-four dash one hundred and section one sixty-four dash one oh one zero one to reflect newly defined uses. Uh, Mr. Depot, do you have to give a staff report?
Brian Ditto, who's actually in the audience today, representing Carroll County Commerce Center located in the city of Westminster at Corporate Center Court, contacted Community Plan Development regarding their desire to operate automobile service shop use at the Commerce Center, which is zone PI Plan Industrial Zone. Section one sixty-four seventy-five five A lists specific retail and commercial uses allowed in the PI zone. However, automobile service uses was not identified as one of those allowed uses. During their review of the zoning ordinance and types of automobile-related uses provided, city administration and community plan development determined that automobile-related uses contained in these zoning ordinance do not reflect the array of such uses currently offered to automobile owners and that the city should clearly identify which automobile-related uses are permitted and in which zones consistently and to consistently refer to the uses established and define such uses. Community Plan Development drafted a proposed tax amendment to the zoning ordinance to address the automobile type uses and presented these amendments to the Economic Development Committee, ECDC. The Community Plan and Development continued to meet with ECDC to discuss the automobile related tax amendments and any proposed community plan and development revisions based on the discussions with ECDC. The draft tax amendment was provided to Mr. Ditto for comment on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Then Community Plan Development represented the most recent proposed tax amendments addressing ECDC's and Mr. Ditto's comments. On June ninth, twenty twenty-five, the Mayor Common Council introduced ordnance twenty-five oh one automobile uses tax amendment and referred the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission for through their own recommendation. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission or the commission held a public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one. At this meeting, Clark Shaper, representing the Carroll County Commerce Center, requested that the commission consider, one, keeping restaurant as a listed permitted use in the PI zone under section one sixty-four six six G, which currently states motor ends, motels, restaurants and service stations; two, removing restaurants and lunchrooms with or without drive-throughs, including fast foods, as in allowed retail commercial service use in the PI zone under section one sixty-four seventy-five D five A; and three, moving new uses automobile detail shops and automobile repair and service shops minor from the allowed retail commercial service shop uses in the PI zone under section one sixty-four seventy-five D five A to a permitted use under section one sixty-four sixty-six. The commission voted and recommended the Mayor Common Council to, one, keep as requested the restaurant as permitted use in the PI zone under section one sixty-four six six G; two, to remove restaurants and lunchrooms with or without drive-throughs, including fast food as an allowed use in section one sixty-four seventy-five D five A; and to move automobile detail shops and repair and service shops minor from section one sixty-four seventy-five D five A to a permitted use under section one sixty-four sixty-five in PI, in the PI zone. Um, ordinance twenty-five oh one, as, I'm just gonna go through each one of those recommendations by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, the first one. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one, as introduced, proposed to amend zoning ordinance section one sixty-four six six G by removing restaurants and service stations from the use that is defined as motor ends, motels, restaurants and service stations. So, the tax amendment was recommending that that section simply stated motor ends and motels. When the zoning ordinance was adopted in nineteen seventy-nine, motor ends, motels, restaurants and service stations was listed as permitted use in the PI zone. They weren't broken up. They were clustered together. Um, and this is the only location in the ordinance in seventy-nine and today that clusters restaurants with those uses. Otherwise, it's listed as restaurants and lunchrooms throughout the ordinance. So, this was a list of permitted use in the ordinance. Um, the zoning ordinance was amended whereby section twenty-one twenty B seven was replaced by section one sixty-four sixty-six G in the PI zone. The zoning administrator believes that the intent of the restaurant coupled with motor ends, motels and service stations was to allow a restaurant as an accompanying or integrated use with motor ends, motels and service stations. At the time the zoning ordinance was adopted, it was common for motor ends, motels and service stations to include a restaurant or coffee shop as a standard amenity for travelers. The second issue for ordinance twenty twenty-five is introduced did not propose to delete restaurants, lunchrooms with or without driving, drive-throughs, including fast foods. So, today, as, as explained or tried to explain, in the PI zone, initially when in nineteen seventy-nine, when it was created, the ordinance was created, all residential and retail commercial uses were not allowed in the PI zone. However, over time, in Jan, on September ninth, twenty thirteen, the Mayor Common Council adopted ordinance eight forty-six, which did allow certain retail and commercial uses listed as local retail businesses or service shops in the PI zone. Subject to certain conditions or restrictions that limited the gross area in the PI zone dedicated to these uses. So it's not listed as a permitted use, it says special exception use, but there was a third allowed. Use that you could add a commercial or service shop use in the P I zone. So it's a little unique when it comes to the zoning ordinance. Um however, as stated, so any automobile service use is not listed in the in those uses at the time it was adopted. Um one of those uses is listed as a restaurant and lunchroom with or without drive-throughs, including fast foods. Um unlike the integrated restaurants prohibited in the P I zone under section one sixty four six six G as outlined above. The zoning administrator believes that the addition of the restaurant and lunchrooms with or without drive-throughs, including fast food. Was intended to expand on the type of restaurants allowed in the P I zone. And to allow for individual or standalone restaurant. As such, the zoning administrator does not support removing restaurants and lunchrooms with or without drive-throughs. Including fast food as a permitted use in the P I zone. Furthermore, the zoning administrator believes that the action recommended by the commission to remove. The restaurants and lunchroom use as permitted P I zone was not part of the ordinance introduced by the Mayor and Common Council. Possibly reclining the process of ordinance twenty five oh one to restart to start over. And be reintroduced to the common council. The third element uh ordinance twenty twenty five oh one, as introduced. Proposed to amend zoning ordinance section one sixty four seventy five D five A. By adding new uses automobile detailing shops and automobile repair and service shops minor. To permitted retail commercial service shop uses in the P I zone. Furthermore, ordinance twenty twenty five oh one, as introduced. Those to amend zoning ordinance section one sixty four fifty four. By adding. These uses automobile details detailing shops in the I I zone as a special exception use. And automobile repair and service shops minor in the I I I G as a special exception use. Um unlike the recommended as a permitted use in the P I zone. As previously stated, the Mayor and Common Council adopted ordinance eight sixty four allowing certain retail and commercial uses. In the P I zone, subject to certain conditions and restrictions. Under section one sixty four seventy five D. The proposed new uses automobile detailing shops and automobile repair and service shops minor. By proposed definitions are service shops similar to the other retail businesses or service shops. Listed in one sixty four seventy five D that's allowed additional commercial service uses in the P I. In addition, the zoning administrator is concerned that separating out specific local retail businesses or service shops, that's recommended by the commission. That would therefore not be subject to the certain conditions and restrictions similarly listed. As required by other local retail businesses and service shops in the P I zone. Um creates an imbalance and a lack of retail and imbalance and a lack of justice or equity. For the similarly listed uses in the P I zone. So again, staff recommended that these service uses be equally treated as other service use in the P I zone. By separating them as a permitted use. It creates an imbalance that they would not otherwise be subject to those additional regulations. Um. And again, as with the previous one, the zoning administrator believes that the action recommended by the commission to add new uses. As a permitted use in the P I zone was not part of the ordinance introduced to the mayor by the Mayor and Common Council. Requiring the process for ordinance twenty five oh one to start over and be reintroduced to the Mayor and Common Council. With that, Department of Community Planning. And Development recommends that the Mayor and Common Council approve ordinance twenty five oh one. Automobile use tax amendment amending the zoning ordinance as introduced on June nine, twenty twenty five. And providing attachment one of this report. And amend zoning ordinance section one sixty four sixty six G. Of attachment one to keep restaurants as an allowed use under that motor ends, motels, restaurants and service station use. So therefore the tax would just be eliminating service station use from that one sixty four uh sixty six G. Uh use and that completes my report and available for any questions.
And would anyone like to make any public comment?
I would. Instead of being a remain seating.
Please see the other names. Yes.
Remain in the press. Yes, thank you. Kelly Schaefer Miller, seventy three, East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Carroll County Commerce Center. I think most of you, all of you are aware of the Carroll County Commerce Center that owns and developers of that site. Um. What's unique about the Commerce Center is that it developed under the cohesive development plan required in the P I zone. So the P I zone says that if you have a property that's ten acres or more. You can apply for a development plan and then you can bring in a percentage of retail uses to the industrial zone. You have to be one of the industrial zones to be eligible to apply for this development plan in the P I zone. So there are other P I zoned properties in the city, but I don't know that any of them have to vote. With this development plan whereby you have one property that's over ten acres. That then becomes then with a development plan that outlines the future of the site. It's separate and. Inferent from a site development plan because then a site development plan is processed anytime an actual building is considered and proposed. Um that then effectuates the development plan sort of um. If you look at other areas of the county, like Liberty Exchange is kind of the county's version of that. Domin Edersburg corridor, that's an that's an industrial park in the county. So it's a unique zone because you have this development um plan that kind of outlines how your ultimate site is going to get developed. So we we I say we, but the Carroll County Commerce Center, this is Brian Ditto, see right there. Um are constantly uh approached by prospective tenants for this site. Can we come here? Does this fit? Is this cohesive? All of these questions. And so that's really the background of what Mark sort of outlined about a year and a half ago. We approached Mark and Sarah because we had a prospective tenant of Safelight. You know, the auto glass, they just kind of pull out your auto glass, replace your auto glass. Um that use and we were hoping to be able to lease space to them. And what came of those discussions was that in order to do that. We would need to process some sort of tax amendment that would allow for these auto uses. So that then really. Triggered a whole reevaluation of your code just to make everything consistent because these auto uses weren't very clearly or. Uh consistently called out across all of the zoning districts. So that's why now today before you as a tax amendment for. Every single zone in the city to kind of make everything completely work. So the the real really the two things that we are asking for you to consider tonight are the two things. That were requested of Planning Commission and the Planning Commission favorably recommended. Is I'll call them out and I did a quick little markup too, just to make it easier for you to see. On page thirteen. Of your E F proposed ordinance. Intend. That's why I brought these.
Thank you.
Thirteen, this is of the proposed ordinance. The house product. This is of the actual ordinance. I thought that was kind of the easiest way to show you what we're talking about here. So on page thirteen, section thirteen, that first red box. Uh the request is to remove the cross through of the restaurant use. And I'll talk about kind of why it's why we're asking for this. If you turn to that second page, page fourteen, and that's actually the end of section fourteen. They're requesting that you move those two auto uses to that previous section of the code. That allow that provides for the uses that are allowed in the P I zone. Now. Just to kind of put in context for me what this means as support to us. Going back to my previous statement about. The Carroll County Commerce Center developing under that development plan in the I zone. Part of what the P I zone provides for, if you develop under that development plan. That you can have fifteen percent area devoted to retail uses. Those retail uses are what you see partially listed here on the second page. Okay, so that under this code, that would include the automobile detailing shops. And the automobile repair and service shops minors. Um. We are requesting that those be moved to uses that are permitted in the P I zone. In the previous section of the code. Because we do not think that those are appropriate to be counted against our more general retail uses. Um that's a threshold that we have to maintain. The reason that we think this is an appropriate request and what was explained to Planning Commission and Planning Commission felt favorably as well. Is that related to to that section. These uses, uh if you look at the definitions of those two uses, these are really less intense than a lot of the. Um industrial uses that are already allowed at this site without counting against any sort of threshold. So two that I just thought out real quickly as an example are. By right, without counting against any threshold, we could have truck or motor freight terminal at the site. We could have blacksmith welding machine or similar shops. Um so those are a little bit more of what you think of when you think of your traditional industrial uses. And I would say that the. Uh the auto abuses, although the the two that are being listed in our zone are the least intense, it's not inclusive of the body shop type of use. Um are still more industrial in nature and should not count against our retail percentage threshold. This would be consistent treatment with how the county treats these sorts of shops in their zoning ordinance. Not that you're under any sort of obligation to care how the county treats things. But it would maintain some consistency there because they allow for these uses in their industrial zones as well. One of by right and one your special exception process. Um. The P I, as I explained in my sort of beginning statement, is a unique zone. It really is designed to create a cohesive development um of a park like setting. If you look to the purpose clause of it. And you look to some of the standards of that zone, it calls for very specific requirements. So this is not necessarily right for concern that if you allow for these without counting against the fifteen percent threshold. You're gonna see the entire site develop with auto detailing shops. It's just really not a realistic concern in that zone. So I don't think that there's any uh. Threat to the public health, safety and welfare, if you will, by allowing those two uses to just not count against that fifteen percent threshold. Um the other thing that I'll point out, which gets a little bit nuanced, is that because that P I zone has that development plan requirement. That development plan requires that you dictate certain areas for your fifteen percent retail threshold. So if these uses are being called out as only being allowed under the fifteen percent retail threshold. You could not perhaps locate one next to a very compatible existing industrial tenant out there. Because that might not be what we called out on our retail or on our plan as a retail area. That might require a full amended development plan. Just to allow a tenant to locate in one of those existing buildings out there. Um that like, for example, the Royal Farms that's out there, that was called, we had to go through an amended development process for that to be called out as part of the retail. Not all the site is called out as retail on that plan. So that's just a that's a pretty substantial hurdle for an individual tenant to be put through. Um for what I would say is really no reason to put them through that. I think if these uses are compatible with the industrial uses that exist out there and that could locate out there. The restaurant going back to the first page of this, the restaurant use. I understand some of the concerns. I don't, however, I don't agree with how he's reading that. Um I do not think that the intent of that language was for it to be restaurants with a motel or restaurants in a motel. If you look at sections of the P I zone itself, there are several of those kind of like grouped uses together. And they're. They're still like just grammatically, but sorry, I have I have an English major. And the way it's written with a comma and is not indicative of a sort of it as an accessory use. There are sections of your code that call out and say, if you have this, in fact, I think it's in one of the definitions here tonight. If you have this, you can have an accessory. Blah 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 use. It's not written in that way in here. And in the P I zone. There are. There are a few other like research, experimental and testing laboratories, warehousing and wholesale distribution centers. Um that's just in the P I zone, but then if you look at some of the industrial zones, there's um. One that's like manufacturer pottery um or. Or similar ceramic products, um clothing and shoe manufacturers. So if you look at those, there are a lot of uses that are kind of. Blumped together and some of them might relate throughout your ordinance and some of them don't. And I think that we can all agree that part of the reason we're here tonight for this text amendment is to bring some consistency with these auto uses. So. To say that, well, restaurants are treat are called out similarly in other sections, yes, we I think we all acknowledge that there is something inconsistencies just generally across the code. That's just how what happens because different zones are brought in and different tax amendments are brought in and that's how things develop. Uh but what we are not looking to do is to lose our ability to have restaurants. By right at this property without counting against our fifteen percent threshold. And that's the concern that we have if this gets eliminated, that we would no longer be allowed to have those without them counting against. And again, I will say, I think you all are aware of this having been to the site. I don't think that there is any legitimate fear of the P I zone being eaten up at like a restaurant park. It's that's not what we're seeing from a tenant need, uh but it is an important feature of the site to have a restaurant use. Um and open up the site for for that use again, without the restrictions of that percentage threshold. And then the development plan is concerned. Um I also understand from Mister Depot's staff report that he believes or believes possibly. That these sort of changes would require a new advertising, new caring process. Obviously, I assume your city attorney, I'm sure, will advise you on that. I do not think that they do. Um I think this is all very clearly been advertised. This is what we're here to talk about. Um everybody's been put on notice of these, so I don't think that should be uh a concern necessarily that this is going to unnecessarily delay things. In that regard, I will also say that any prospective tenants we had that would benefit from these are currently no longer. Calling us, if you will. Um so time is not. Uh we are we are not under pressure. If this does not get amended, we're not going to lose Safelight. Safelight has already. Tried to find a different location. Um so we would appreciate you taking this into consideration and adopting. The texts that have been proposed with these modifications. Happy to answer any questions you have. I did just want to provide a few. Safelight is one example of a prospective tenant. Um just I think it's helpful to visualize like what could this be? At at the Carroll County Commerce Center. So I wanted to share with you that two of the other prospective tenants who are interested in leasing space. One was um interestingly, a person who takes in like a van and rehabs it to become a food truck. Just kind of go ahead and you know, who knew? Um that and then there was a tenant who just specializes in audio components of cars. And puts in like nice audio systems. So just so you can kind of get a. A picture of the types of uses that are approaching us as potential. Um that would fall within these categories. That's the sort of thing that we're talking about. So happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Great, thank you.
Would um does anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Uh yes, uh Mister Pico.
I I have a series of questions, if that's okay, for various people. Um so the first question I have is, this is not on the agenda later on this evening. Adoption. Do we have any sense of when we're expected to bring this back or to confirm the discussion, if you can.
The. The council are required to take action uh ninety days after the public hearing is closed.
So we have to so so we have to act within the many days, but. We don't necessarily have it on the agenda for.
We don't.
It likely will not be on the agenda for the next meeting because we probably aren't gonna get an opportunity to revisit this in time. Thank you. Probably be a little bit long.
Thank you, Mr. President. So. Um. One one question I had for. Mister Ditto or or Miss Miller is um. How much unused or developable space is still available at the Commerce Center?
I can answer that. Um there are about uh. Nine acres within the Commerce Center that's already part of the city. And then there are thirteen acres that are. In a in another parcel uh north of Royal Farms that the Rosen family also owns. Um currently named the the Arnie one property. Um that has yet to be developed or annexed into the city of Westminster, but that is certainly a goal for marching toward.
So within the portions within the city, there's about an acre left.
About nine acres left.
Nine acres left. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Nine acres left. I'm sorry. Okay, thank, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I guess the only question I had, I'm not opposed doing this. I want to take it that way. I'm just trying to sort of, I mean, this was an ordinance that was adopted. Years ago when we originally decided, so I'm trying to think through what the intent was and then what that means today. So, so my question is, as we think about this kind of a use in in this area. It seems to me that, that the the point of an industrial zone is to put that stuff out there. That you don't want, that nobody really wants to be around, right? You know, that, yeah, so, yeah, but we had smelting furnaces or. You know, other, other stuff you don't want next to the elementary school, you know, that and that stuff out there. Um. Things like, like this, like a Safelite, you know, uh, for example. You know, or things that you would expect to find more in commercial kind of area where people, where people go, where people have easy access to. Not sort of someplace where you have to drive past more, you know. I mean, I've been out there, it's nothing terrible, it's gonna be out there, right? So, but, you know, those kinds of things, right? So, so help me understand what the attraction is for, for someone who wants to have those kind of uses. I want to be located in a spot like that.
Well, I, I storage really did unique business of the PI zone and it is, I will say, the PI zone brings in the industrial restricted. Industrial general uses to be permitted uses. And that's really not what we see the majority of tenants coming in as. Those are your, those are what you're talking about more so. Your heavy industrial like things you want to be a little bit out there, right? Um, but the PI zone in the purpose clause is called out as providing a park-like setting. For a community of industries wishing to mutually maintain aesthetically pleasing appearances and operations. Um, and then it goes on to say tracks within the district are to be planned, promoted and developed. For industries within this protection of performance standards here is provided. And then it provides for a separate section that goes from some of the performance standards and talks about the compatibility of the uses. So I think it really just is a unique um sort of mixed use zone. And that's, from my experience, that's also what we see at the county with these industrial parks and business parks develops. Is that it's a unique cohesive park-like setting where you are getting a blend of the lighter industrial. And then some retail. So I think that's where, in my opinion, these two auto uses are like light industrial uses. They're not your heavy body shop manufacturing use, but they are still a lighter industrial. They're not, uh, you know, fancy office, professional business office setting.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna add, this is not a jiffy loop or was not a jiffy loop by any stretch of the imagination. This was, you know, autoglass. Um, and I think that the, with all respect to the council, the other thing that I would ask them to consider. And and this is sort of a pedantic argument at this point because we're a hundred percent leased at Carroll County Commerce Center. Our concern for the owners, now, one behalf of the ownership. Is simply to, you know, safeguard those protections that already exist or those uses that already exist within the. PI zone that, you know, that we thought that we were entitled to and to perhaps cast a net for the future. The thing that I was gonna point out um was, I think that the council has to keep in mind the dictates of the market too. Sometimes, you know, whether we think that, that, you know, that that a Safelite may or may not be the best use for the Commerce Center. Somebody there in their decision-making chain is thinking, hey, this is a site that we're interested in, that we think we can, you know, do well at. And, and as, as the, the owner's an operator, so the commerce, Commerce Center, certainly something that we want to explore, you know, to the best of our ability.
Right, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, this, um, Sir Dino is not on the record.
I was just gonna ask.
Thank you.
Sir Dino, can you please get your name and address, sir?
Certainly can. Brian Dino, um, do you want my home address or do you want my business address?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, so the uh Carroll County Commerce Center is six ninety-eight through seven fifteen. Corporate Center Court, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven.
Thank you.
Welcome.
There are any other questions from the council? Or statements, Mr. Mayor, you're probably. Hearing none of those ordinance. At.
Seven forty-two.
Seven forty-two, thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
That's just good. Okay, so we'll move on, um.
I have a question.
Decisions, public hearings, special guests, minutes, it only wanted minutes. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. First set will be the mayor and com- common council meeting minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The second set will be mayor and common council work session meeting minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dayhoff with the motion, give up a second.
Second.
Mr. Gilbert with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving along with two sets of minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Wow. That is different.
They roll that.
Yeah. And, and what's that called when you make everybody vote individually? There's a name, there's a, yeah, in the week, yeah. Um, any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the minutes are approved. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? And Mr. Pecorero with Miss Gilbert with a second.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any discussion relative to the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the cons- consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to the report from the mayor, Madam Mayor.
Great, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I will leave this, please. Um, there's just one thing that I have to report on, on Tuesday, like the, you know, I spent some time with, uh, Robin Summerfield. From Senator Van Hollen's office and Denise Bluewall from Senator also Bruce's office. Um, introducing them to Westminster and some of our plans for the future. Our city administrators, Simples, joined us for the first forty-five minutes after which I took. Uh, them on a walkie-talkie along Main Street into our exploration commons, stopped some small businesses and ended up at. It's run by the magic, both Mr. Summerfield and Ms. Bluewall are excited to come back to Westminster. And hopefully in the future, we'll be able to coordinate a visit by both senators to Westminster. And that is my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now we'll move on to reports from committees and liaisons. We'll start with the Arts Council. Madam Mayor.
I have nothing to report.
Economic Community and Development Committee, Mr. Huff is not here. I guess I'm vice and I have no report. Have it for Mr. Pecorero, would like to go. All right, we'll keep moving. Finance Committee, Mr. Pecorero.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Personnel Committee, Miss Gilbert.
I have no report.
Public Safety Committee, I'm gonna have to break the trend, I do have a report, but it's all good stuff. During the week of July fourteenth through the eighteenth, Sergeant Tim Delospedale and Officer Ashley Era participated in the annual Camp Cops Youth Outreach Event. Wonderful event. Glad we had a couple of folks there. On July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, Lieutenant Tim Reif was recognized by our local high store. With their hometown humor award as a community partner who exemplifies exceptional service and dedication. For his unwavering commitment to making a positive impact with our community. That's very nice. And on the twenty-fifth, Detective Adam Hines received the designation of Police Officer. Uh, First Class or PFC for successfully completing the probationary period. At the Westminster Police Department and for performing in a manner that supports the agency's mission. So that's always nice to see somebody make it through that probationary period. Next, we'll move on to Public Works Committee, Mr. Pecorero.
I have nothing, President.
Wreck and Parks Committee, Miss Gilbert.
This is very unusual, but I have nothing to say.
We have rolling, folks.
We are rolling.
Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff, Mayor of the Quarter. It will enter governmental, Mr. Huff is not here. Uh, you have anything, Mr. Pecorero?
Sir.
All right, so council comments and discussion, Mr. Pecorero.
Uh, I don't have anything to share today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Uh, Mr. President, um, I attended the Pride Festival last Saturday on behalf of the Mayor and the Council. Um, it was a great success. Uh, it was, uh, a, a lot of folks came to town and were impressed at how welcoming. It opened and affirming, uh, the city of Westminster was. Uh, many folks, uh, spoke with me about how much they liked it with the police department. Um, it was a great friend raising event for the city of Westminster. Um, and then also this morning, Councilwoman Anne Gilbert and I attended Commerce, who's at the Carroll County Fair. Um, although the Ag Center is not in the city limits, the city of Westminster benefits greatly from the fact that. Um, agriculture is still the number one industry in Carroll County. So it was a really good event this morning. That'd be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
You said that the Pride of that was a fundraiser for the city.
Right.
A friendly.
Congratulations, yes.
But I thought you said fundraiser. I'm like, I, I don't want to just, I don't want to debate you in your own comments, but I don't think that's correct.
Friends, friends.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I gotta turn my hearing aids up. Miss Gilbert.
Um, I do not have any comment. Um, Councilman Dayhoff took care of my one comment and I'm good to go.
There we go. We're not gonna hear anything from Mr. Huff this evening and I have nothing. So we'll move on to bids. We have one bid this evening on the agenda. It's the approval of warrant to earned contractors for exterior painting of the Cranberry Water Treatment Plant. In the amount of eighty-two thousand one hundred dollars. Mr. Simples.
Thank you, sir. The Cranberry Water Treatment Plant is a precast concrete structure that was built in two thousand and nine. It was originally painted an off-white color with a blue band running around the top of the building. In the sixteen years since construction, the paint has faded considerably and there are many areas where the paint has started to peel. This project will consist of properly cleaning and preparing the exterior of the building before repainting with the same colors. This project will also provide an opportunity to inspect the caulking in between the precast panels and replace it if cracked or damaged. The request for bids was posted on E. Mark Maryland Marketplace. On June third, twenty twenty-five, five contractors responded with bids ranging from seventy thousand one hundred eight dollars to two hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. After reviewing the submissions, staff determined that the bid submitted by Earn Contractors Inc. was the most responsive and experienced bid. They provided an extensive list of references as well as five examples of relevant experience from recently completed project, projects. They also currently have contracts with Montgomery County Government, the City of Gatorsburg and the University of Maryland for painting services. Achievers LLC was the lowest bid but did not provide pricing for line item three in the scheduled values. D Project Inc. was the low, the next lowest bid, however, they can only, they could not provide more than a single example of relevant experience. Therefore, staff recommends the city award a bid to Earn Contractors Inc. For eighty-two thousand one hundred dollars for exterior painting of the Cranberry Water Treatment Plant. That concludes the report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Miss Simples. Um, so may I have a motion to approve the bid for earned contractors for eighty-two thousand one hundred dollars?
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Pecorero. Do I have a second?
Awesome.
Mr. Dayhoff, I think I heard you first, so, uh, we'll go ahead and get it on the floor. Is there any discussion relative to this bid? Hearing none, go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of awarding the contractor earned contractors for eighty-two thousand one hundred dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it and the bid is awarded, Mr. Simples. So please go ahead and paint that building right up. Then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have two items before us this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Um, the first resolution for consideration is the adoption of annexation resolution number twenty-five oh seven. An annexation plan for annexation eighty-seven for certain property containing plus or minus one point two acres. Contiguous and adjoining to the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property located at one zero, one two. Baltimore Boulevard, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. Consisting of real property identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero two nine seven four eight. Map zero zero four six, grid zero zero one six, parcel zero six one six. Which property is the subject of a petition for annexation submitted by the owners of the subject property to the mayor and common council of Westminster.
Thank you, Mr. Whitworth, making your of your body, heartily. Mr. Dico.
Uh, nothing to add other than it's, this comes before the actual annexation resolution. Maryland annotated code requires that, um. To, in addition to, but not as part of the annexation resolution, which we did have the public hearing on. The legislative body of the municipalities shall adopt an annexation plan for the area to be annexed. So the first, and this annexation plan was part of the resolution for annexation that was introduced to the Mayor and Common Council. It was provided to, uh, Maryland Department of Planning in Carroll County. It was also reviewed and accepted for recommend and recommended, recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city. So that's why we're looking to annexation resolution, annexation plan resolution to be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Dico. We'll go ahead and get it on the floor. May I have a motion to adopt twenty-five oh seven?
Motion to adopt twenty-five oh seven.
Gilbert, go to second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Dayhoff with the second. Any discussion related to the question?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Dayhoff.
I'm really thrilled that we're, um. One parcel at a time that we're picking up properties on that end of town. Um, I think this is really good for the city. I wonder if we could, um. I wonder if we could develop some incentives for some of those other properties to annex into the city. Because we have a lot of benefits if you're a part of the city. And, uh, if we could, uh, maybe put our thoughts together at some point in time, maybe in a work session. Um, about providing some incentives to bring some more of this property to. That would be my only comment, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. I, I'm, I'm gonna move your comments to the next item because that's the actual adoption.
Oh.
Bringing them in. This is just the plan, but that's okay.
But thank you.
It's still your main.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so anyone else have any comments about the plan for annexation? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of adoption of twenty-five oh seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Here, any ayes? Uh, the ayes have it and the, and a, adoption of annexation resolution twenty-five oh seven is approved. We'll now move on to the, uh, Mr. Whitworth, I almost started.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second resolution for consideration is the adoption of annexation resolution number twenty-five dash oh six. Annexation eighty-seven, enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster. By annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus one point two acres. Contiguous and adjoining to the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property located at one zero, one two Baltimore Boulevard. Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven, also identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero two nine seven four eight. Map zero zero four six, grid zero zero one six, parcel zero six one six.
Thank you. Mr. Dico.
I have nothing more to add from what's provided at the public hearing. And again, staff is just recommending the Mayor and Common Council. Adopt resolution twenty-five oh six.
Wonderful. May I have a motion to adopt twenty-five oh six?
Motion to adopt twenty-five oh six.
Mr. Dayhoff with a motion and Mr. Pecorero with the second. Is there any discussion related to twenty-five oh six?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Dayhoff.
Would it be okay if?
You're gonna do the whole thing again?
Can you move, can you move my comments to this, please?
We can.
Thank you, thank you.
The city's flirting with these and do that, but.
Thank you.
I knew you'd appreciate that when you go back and look at it later.
Well, I, I was embarrassed, but thank you.
What are you kidding?
Well.
I flubbed up a lot more than you did.
Well.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get the question called. Uh, all those in favor of. Adoption of annexation resolution twenty-five oh six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the adoption of twenty-five oh six is approved. Now we will move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business without, which I'm aware of. Is anyone aware of any unfinished business? Will we move on to new business? I have no new business this evening is, that I'm aware of is any new business? Hearing none, we'll move on to departmental reports, Miss Simples. Hearing none, we'll move on to departmental reports, Miss Simons.
Mr. President, you have my commitment that we will be very quick with our departmental. We're gonna start tonight with the Housing Department, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, I have nothing.
That's clear.
There we go. Uh, we've given Ms. Gruber the night off tonight, we have no recreation report, but the public works report, I just remind you. Uh, paving continues, um, through this week in the evening, um, I think that looks really great, I mean, I appreciate. Your willingness to do paving at night. Any questions about that? None, we will move on.
I think we need one quick comment, one day, go ahead, Mr. Gilbert.
I was, I was, you, you kind of, uh, mentioned it, Miss Simons, I have to say, paving at night.
Yes.
Um, has been like terrific, it's, it's a great idea, I've seen like traffic go, go smoothly during the day. It's cooler, I mean, I'm sure the workers are even appreciating it, given the fact we've had a hundred degree weather lately. Um, other than the reverberation of the noise that I hear as I try to go to sleep, because I'm near the paving. That's the only negative I have, it's, it's kind of like lulling me to sleep, I'm even okay.
Oh yes, I can, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I don't know if this is the proper time to bring it up or not, but I have advocated for years that we restore parking. On the south side of Main Street, adjacent to the library. And now would be the time to do it because we have to strike that area. When State Highway rebuilt Main Street in the nineteen eighties. They removed parking on that side of the street, they put a turn lane. Or the entire block is probably never used. And if we were to restore those five or six parking, and then, so we, we complained to State Highway about that. And State Highway with the thinking of a state highway and not a municipality said. Oh, well, give it a try, if it doesn't work, we can move it back. So forty five years later, it still is there and it doesn't work and we could really use the five or six parking spaces. Or from that side of the street. I don't know how we do it, but I would, I would, I really think it would be a, a tremendous benefit for the city of Westminster in the downtown shopping district.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff, Mr. Peckerero.
Um, I respectfully have to disagree with that, I think, I think the turn, turn lane works great, I use it every day. Um, and I think that, you know, adding another lane of parking there would, would restrict. One of the busiest parts of the busiest street in town and we have lots and lots of parking. Right behind that spot, which we want to encourage people to use in our, in our two parking garages and our large surface lot. And in our other large surface lots, I don't think we've got a parking spot. And I think that we would, we would create a traffic problem if we tried to add another lane.
Thank you, what I'm gonna ask is, uh, what do we, this is, appreciate the comments, but we're in a, in a staff report, so. Let's, uh, if we want to bring this up in a future work session potentially, um, uh, we do have a couple of items, uh. That we're currently working, we'll be getting back in the work sessions on after some vacations. So I know we always allow some time at those work sessions for opportunities for us to discuss with staff our thoughts, so. Let's go ahead and move that over to a work session if everyone's.
Agreed.
Good, okay, we'll, we'll keep moving on, Miss Simons.
Thank you, sir, uh, we're ready to move on to your Human Resources, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, I have no report.
See the trend here, we'll move on to I T.
I'll keep it.
Mr. Moore.
I'll keep it, thank you, Mr. Simons, um, right now, the addition of all I T stuff, we are currently revamping some of our G I S applications and. And more, right, and some of that, um, the zoning maps had an update and we are currently having an open G I S position on the website if anybody's interested, but that's my report.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, we'll move over to the Planning Department, can't imagine it's gonna be quite as brief.
On July seventeenth, twenty twenty five, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Helped public hearings on annexation resolution twenty five oh six or annexation eighty seven. As well as the ordinance twenty twenty five oh one automobile use tax amendments, in both cases. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded favorable recommendations to Mayor and Common Council, which was discussed tonight. Uh, the Plan Commission also approved sign permit nineteen eighty eight for two fifty five Baltimore Boulevard. Allowing a sign greater than sixty four square feet but not, not exceeding one hundred and twenty five square feet for David Ross Orthodontics. To locate in the shopping center, the Plan Zoning Commission also received an update on the water resource elements of Carroll County. On August fifth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to hear an application by Modular Genius Inc. The applicant and property owner to appeal a May twenty one, twenty twenty five zoning determination. Made by the zoning administrator concerning if outdoor storage would be permitted use. In the Meadow Branch Industrial Park on Lot Two C in Westminster's owned I R. The determination said that stored, outdoor storage is not permitted, it's being appealed, um, that determination is being appealed. And that completes my report and available for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Deho?
So, where does that appeal go to B C A?
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to the Finance Department, I just want to take a quick moment to highlight, uh, the work of Ms. Rogers. Um, we all know how long the budget takes to put together, but there's a time after the budget's finished. Where we all come down a little bit from the ramped up pace that we're at, and Ms. Rogers has managed to keep up a very high pace in what we call this ordinary time. Before the next big deadline and has managed to get through a ton of work in the last couple of weeks, this is work that you'll never see that's. Kind of housekeeping stuff and, and general things at a time where it would have been okay to backpedal a little bit on the pace. Uh, and I'm, I'm so impressed with the, with the work that she's been doing, uh, and managing to keep her department up and running at extremely high pace. So, thank you, Ms. Rogers, uh, please give your report.
I certainly appreciate that, thank you, Ms. Simons. Um, good evening, I'll be very brief, just wanted to give the mayor and council an update that our fiscal twenty five audit. The preliminary portions of that took place on site last week at forty five, um, West Main. When they left the field on Friday, they did a number of things that they would still need us to pull together so that they could still continue looking at things in the office, so. At this time, I don't have any details or anything to share specifically as we've not had a chance, um, to allow them to complete their work on the preliminary. Portion of the audit, um, nor have I met with the engagement manager at this point, but just wanted to let you know that was progressing. That's the end of my report.
Are there any questions for Finance Director?
Hearing none, we will move on to the Police Department.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Council, um, earlier this week, Patrol made arrests of, uh, uh, shoplifting. Um, freak that came up from out of, uh, area at Lowe's and was, uh. Stolen a group of the key to drills, so that you get job in that. Tomorrow morning, we have shop the cop back to school event. Was scheduled for Dutter Park, but due to extreme heat, they moved into West Middle School, so we'll be doing that. Getting at ten thirty tomorrow morning, concludes my report, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the police chief?
Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. That will move on to citizens' comments, final line of our agenda, citizen comments, story which we invite the public to address the mayor and council. What do you think, Chief, related to tonight's agenda and other city matters? For those not attending your public meeting, we welcome your comments via email at comments at Westminster M D dot gov. All email comments will be shared with the mayor and council, please include your address and phone number with your comments. We will now invite comments from those present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the mayor and council, our role at this point is to listen to your comments, lady. And respond appropriately after consulting with staff and each other. You getting that? Is there anybody who seemed to, would like to comment?
Only one night five West Main Street, last week, okay, I, I'm getting right, we part. The Civil War Heritage Area Division met last week, the Wakefield Valley Clubhouse. To plan our annual meeting, I understand we're the first people to book a jet there. Um, it is absolutely beautiful, Abby Gruber's doing a wonderful job, I'm sure that she works more than twenty four hours a day as the city council mayor. Um, as I was there, I was thinking about the, um, beautiful Antrim Gardens where people like to walk around. And, uh, I would like to offer to donate some flowers out there and, um. Obviously, we could get a garden club to make the plans and save the city's money. Um, I've already donated the flowers in front of the administration building at the top of the hill, Daniel College. Um, and remember your mother who came by train from New Windsor and regret to eat it, thank you, Jeffy. So, just throwing that out there, but the building is absolutely stunning.
Thank you very much. Since you're the only person here this evening, I guess there's not gonna be anybody else gonna make any comments. Uh, that concludes our agenda and the e, and the meeting, our next regular meeting will be held Monday, August eleventh. And with that, and without objection, we are.